Hello, good evening. Welcome to this July 9 regular meeting of the West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calavano?
You stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry. All right. Dr. C, you're up.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. Members of the board and community in attendance, appreciate you being here with us tonight. Just to start off, we have quite a number of items to address in the superintendent's report, but I'd like to start by just once again congratulating the class of 2020. We had a great day today over at the high school. Board and I and students and staff and members of the community participated in three separate graduation ceremonies today. So I would like to again congratulate everyone. I'd like to thank all the staff, the high school staff, custodial staff, who put in a tremendous amount of work to make sure that that could happen safely and to provide our students with a proper send off and proper closure as they move on to the next chapter of their lives. So a great day for West Orange, even amidst some of the challenges and the uncertainty we face. The sun was shining and nothing was standing in our way today. So a great triumph for West Orange High School and our district. I'd like to 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 start off talking a little bit about, you know, our reopening plans, but before we get to talking a little bit about September, I have invited two administrators, Mr. Bly, our athletic director, and Mr. Quagliato, our supervisor of visual and performing arts, to talk a little bit about Phase One of the opening of athletics and our marching band practices, which will start on Monday, July 13. Before I turn it over to them, I just want to kind of preface it by saying, you know, as we look down the road to September, certainly, you know, the fate, if you will, of our of our fall seasons is obviously still in question. When one considers that the guidelines we've received for opening schools and keeping students at a social distance in masks and so on and so forth, it represents a clear disconnect with putting players from opposing teams on the field together. But regardless, today and Monday, we have authorization approval from from the state authorities to move forward with that. Mr. Bly, Mr. Quagliato are going to discuss the various precautions and protocol that we have in place to ensure that our student athletes, musicians, and staff are safe. And this represents a positive step in the right direction that I think is good for our kids to be back doing the things they love, training, practicing, working with their coaches and their mentors, which is why we've moved forward with this Phase One. So I would, at this time, I would turn it over first to Mr. Quagliato to discuss a little bit about the band, and then we'll finish up with Mr. Bly talking about athletics. Mr. Quagliato?
Great, thanks. Thank you for inviting me to the meeting, Dr. Cascon. For the most part, you know, when it when it comes to the marching band and the guidelines that we're following, we're following that which has been set forth by the NJ SIAA Athletics Association. Those guidelines have have clear clear boundaries in terms of what the expectations are. There there are, you know, I'm sure that Ron is prepared to speak to this in in greater detail, but, you know, there are specific forms that students have to complete prior to coming to practice. There's a form that has to be completed seven days prior. And then for every practice that students attend, they're they're going to have another questionnaire. We're doing regular temperature checks. There are groups. Students will be placed in groups not to exceed 10 within those groups. And as far as the marching band is concerned, those groups would be set up based on instrumentation. We're expecting that the students, you know, within those groups are checked regularly and, you know, kept healthy. We would also like to encourage our our parents to do their part from the from the home evaluation in terms of ensuring that students are healthy. And if and if not, to report to us or, in fact, not send their students if if there are specific issues with with temperature or students that may be ill, we have quarantines that are set up for them or we have the ability to send them home prior prior to the rehearsal. Marching band is pretty much set up to have rehearsals twice, actually starting the week of July 20. So we'll be we'll be beginning our rehearsals for Phase One, July 20 and 21. We'll have several several groups and the fields will be allocated for those students to be able to perform. Students will remain outside. Students will have to maintain use of their own instruments and their own music stands and maintain the proper distancing that is governed by the CDC. I think that pretty much gives a broad perspective of, you know, those guidelines indicated by the, let's see, what's the NJ SIAA. Ron, do you want to jump on that?
Before, Ron, before, I just want to interrupt real quickly. A couple of questions, a couple of quick questions for you. The first is, can you speak to it all, you know, by virtue of the fact that, you know, musicians are kind of blowing into instruments, you know, and by virtue of that, you know, the aerosol effect, if you will? Is there anything the guidelines that speaks to taking that into account in terms of the distancing or the manner in which students are rehearsing?
You know what? I think we're we're seeking some additional information about that. I mean, there is an aerosol effect when it comes to the the blowing through instruments and and what comes out of that, which is one of the reasons why rehearsals are right now are to only take place outdoors. And which is why also the the proper distancing within those groups that I mentioned have to be six feet from each individual students and those actual groups need to be anywhere between nine to 18 feet away from each other group. So, yeah, I'm waiting for some additional information to come come in from from the Arts Ed of NJ that's going to discuss a little bit more about what's going on with that aerosol effect associated with the performance of wind instruments. But, you know, we will we'll make sure that our students are only taking this first phase in outdoors. And once again, if 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 we're dealing with inclement weather, then the rehearsal will be canceled.
Well, well played then that we have some some roadway there, you know, up to July 20. I imagine that the state association, based upon the questions that are coming in, will have some greater clarity on that point.
Yes, I hope so, yes.
One other, one other question, just kind of slash clarification. In reviewing the the band rehearsal schedules, you know, I noticed that the that they're 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 blocked out for three hours, whereas the athletic practices are 90 minutes. Now, when we spoke about this, you kind of shed some light on that in terms of, you know, kind of the rationale for that in terms of, you know, what a rehearsal involves in terms of setup and whatnot. Can you can you shed a little light on that?
Well, yeah, exactly. So students arrive and, you know, we love to get a solid 90 90 minute rehearsal in. So by the time students, within that timeframe that we have allocated, within that three hour timeframe, there's a lot that has that has to go on with with the start of, you know, checking to ensure that specific forms have been distributed or collected. The temperature checks, the the equipment that needs to be gathered, music stands, music, things of that sort, and and to get the students to where they need to get to in terms of where their groups are going to be assigned. So there's a lot of organizational things that have to take place in order to get that rehearsal actually started. You know, and and so we want, we just want to make sure that, you know, we've we've booked enough time so that we can take care of all of that preliminary rehearsal stuff, so to speak, and then and then to wind down and and debrief about exactly what's what's taking place within that rehearsal. So, you know, we we think that we think that maybe the rehearsals might even be less than than the three hour timeframe, but we we certainly wanted to ensure that we get a solid 90 minutes of playing. And students also are only going to be meeting that one time. You know, we have a rehearsal schedule for the 20th, which is for a a set of students. And then on the 21st, which is another set. So we have our winds and our and our and our brass and our percussion that are coming in 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 different groups and we'll only meet, they'll only meet one one time for that week. And we want to make sure that, you know, we have ample time to do everything that we need to do within that timeframe.
Thank you, Mr. Quagliato. Mr. Bly, would you like to talk about our athletics plans?
Yeah.
Thank you for being here, by the way, both of you. Appreciate it.
Review yourself, Mr. Bly.
Is that open now?
Now you're good.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, we're very excited about opening up athletics. It'll open up on the 13th. And again, the NJ SIAA has been given the authority to govern the reopening of athletics by the governor. And they've established two committees that have worked together to try to come up with what they call Phase One. Now, there's going to be three phases to the plan to open athletics. In Phase One, the main purpose will be to get the kids back in physical condition. Because of the long layoff, they want this these sessions over the next two weeks to be aerobically aerobic. Okay, we're going to push the kids with running and stuff like that to get the kids back in shape, to condition them, because we feel they've been deconditioned. Okay? And as Lou said, we're got, we've got, went through extensive, we've had several meetings. We've come up with what we call an athletic COVID-19 response team. And we've been over all the state guidelines. We're pretty confident we have them down pretty well. What we've done is we've staggered the times of practice so we don't have all our fall teams in one place at one time. We've also assigned different parking lots for every team. So when the parents pull up, they can not be around other kids coming in. And that's important because during the pre-screening process, if a child should fail, we want that child to be able to be picked up right then and go home. If they do fail the pre-screening, we have to put them in isolation immediately. And we have to call the parent or or guardian to come pick them up. And I'll be notified immediately by the head coach and we will start the process with our response team taking over that particular situation. Every team will enter and leave from one specific spot. The football team, for example, will be entering by the Big Rock on Soriano Field, and they'll be leaving that way. There's only going to be one entrance and one exit. Okay? Every team will donate, will designate one coach as a pre-screener. And his job will be to check the forms quick. Okay? And every kid has to fill out a form that answers about five or six questions. And every, if it's all knows, that means he has no symptoms, no nothing, he will be given a temperature check. As long as the temperature is less than 100.4, he will be allowed to practice. At that time, it's safe for the parent to leave. But on the other hand, if the fever is higher than that, we'd like the student to go right home with his parent or guardian. Okay, now, the pre-screener will be in charge of taking the temperature and reviewing the forms. We're also going to ask the kids, all of our athletes, to sanitize their hands. And they will go through a sanit, they'll sanitize their hands with with some foam product there, a hand sanitizer. And then they'll also have to do that before they leave practice. Okay? Now, while the one coach is pre-screening, the other coaches will make sure that the kids are isolated six feet away from one another in every direction. The coach before practice will designate particular student athletes in individual groups. The groups will be of 10. Okay? And between groups, you can have more than one group, but they have to be at least, we're making it 15 to 18 feet apart. Okay? And each group will have a coach. All right? Now, they are allowed to use equipment. Okay? And they must bring a water bottle, a filled water bottle. Okay? Because it's hot out there. And we are also going to adhere to all the NJ SIAA rules regarding the heat processing. Okay? And we are going to go through practice. Practice can only be 90 minutes in length. Okay? And that includes a 10 minute warm up and a 10 minute cooldown. After that, there'll be no huddles, there'll be no pep talks. The kids will then leave the field. Okay? Again, with the proper spacing. And now, say we do have a student athlete that comes in and he's got a fever of over 100.4. He will be required, he will not be able to practice that day. He'll have to go home. Okay? And he'll have to be cleared by a doctor. And whether that's a 14 day quarantine period or whether the doctor feels it's really not anything serious and he can come back the next day. Before a student athlete comes back, we are going to have the clearance note checked by our school physician, Dr. Mike Kelly, who has been very, very helpful during this whole process with us. And from there, depending on what what we find out, okay, we might have to do some contact tracing. We're going to turn it over to the Board of Health. Okay? And we're going to notify everybody on that committee, including our principal and our superintendent, about the situation. Now, all kids, all the kids are going to be in designated groups, and they're going to be in groups of 10. Now, the interesting thing about this is that, once you're put in a group of 10, you cannot leave that group. Even if you don't come to the next practice, if you come to the following one, you still go back into the same group. And we're doing this for tracing, because it could happen that we might have to suspend an entire group of 10 if someone comes down with something serious. So everybody is designated in a group of 10. And again, we've been over with the coaches, everybody must wear a mask. Okay? And the coaches must wear a mask at all times. Now, the the only time a student athlete may remove his mask or her mask is during a sprinting exercise or a long distance running type of activity, activity, anything that we consider intense aerobic activity. And we've been advised by our doc, by Dr. Kelly, that as soon as the run is over, we should give the kids a couple of minutes to get their breath back, breathe out heavily, and then we are going to put the masks back on immediately. Okay? Now, one thing with the running, and Lou, this might help you a little bit. We're going to have staggered running. Okay? So that nobody runs in the direct path of someone else. The idea is the droplets or the mist could come out of somebody's mouth, come back, and the other child run into it. Okay? So we're going to stagger the kids so that this this should not happen. But again, the primary function of Phase One is to recondition our athletes, get them back in shape for when we go to more rigorous activities later on. This phase supposedly is going to last for two weeks. We have not been given the guidelines yet for Phase Two. We're hoping they come out, maybe even tomorrow. And the other thing is, I think at this time, it's safe to say that I think athletics is very uncertain at this time. You've all heard what happened to the Ivy League. Okay? And the Ivy League, the presidents of the Ivy League are some of the most distinguished men and women in academia today. And people are going to start saying, if the Ivy League is shutting down, maybe they know something we don't. So I would really say that we're still in a in an uncertainty mode right now. And, you know, I'm hoping that we can get it going, because I think it's important for the kids to get back to normalcy. But again, I think that's everything I got, Doc.
Thank you, Mr. Bly. You know, I've been participating in some of your meetings, so I'm fairly well up to speed on this. But I'd just like to to thank you. I'd like to thank our trainers, Sevo, Mr. Palatianos, Dr. Kelly, and of course, the, you know, the coaches. But I think that when I listen to this and you and you start to realize the the amount of kind of intricate management that this is going to require on the part of coaches, I think it speaks to, you know, their their passion for what they do and their and their commitment to their programs and their and their student athletes. So appreciate it. And you got a great handle on it, as good a handle as we can. So thank you, Mr. Bly, Mr. Quagliato. Board members, any questions of either Mr. Quagliato or Mr. Bly?
Anyone? Jump in.
I have a quick question for Mr. Bly, and thank you both for being here tonight and sharing this information with us. I know a lot of students will be anxious to get back to their activities. Mr. Bly, you talked about the COVID response team. Could you tell us a little bit more about that and what their role is and what they're tasked with and who's on it?
The response team is made up of our school nurse, our two athletic trainers, Dr. Kelly, myself, and Mr. Moore. And the function is to follow through on the process if we find someone that is medically not cleared to participate.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question. Mr. Bly, good evening to our guests this evening. Just wondering, two weeks long is Phase One. Is that five days a week and how many hours a day?
You're allowed to practice 90 minutes. 10 minutes have to be for a warm up and 10 minutes for a cooldown. So you're really only allowed 70 minutes. Now, it is up to the coaches how many days a week they want to practice. Okay? They can go as many as five. If you don't have any coach that is going five days. Okay? Most are going two days. I think our football team is going four.
Okay. Does that include the collecting of the forms and the temperature taking as well? That's included in that block of time?
We've, I've scheduled everybody, I've given every team 45 minutes. So anybody who comes in, 45 minutes before practice time begins. So we should have plenty of time to take care of all of pre-screening thoroughly.
Okay. One more question. If a youngster does not show up, he's there one day and he's not there the next day, will there be a follow up by someone to find out why they're not there?
Well, that would be up to the individual coast. Not not necessarily, because every single time that they come, they have to turn in the pre-screening questionnaire, COVID-19 pre-screening form. That form can be found online and it can, they can actually fill that form out before they get to practice. The other thing we've stressed to our coaches is you've got to tell the student athletes, if they're feeling sick or they have a fever, they shouldn't come to practice. They should go get checked out by a doctor at that point. We'd rather not catch them at the entrance point.
Right. Well, that's just my concern. If they're there one day and then they miss a day, miss two days in a row, would someone reach out to find out why they're not there?
I would say yes, because all our coaches take attendance. And the other thing is, we have to, we're going to document the attendance of every kid that comes. Because you cannot move on to Phase Two until the student athlete has completed Phase One. So if you miss Phase One, you cannot go into Phase Two until we have a coach take you through Phase One for two weeks.
Ron, I would, I would add one other thing, which is that all of our coaches have Google Classrooms for their teams. So it's a means by which they can communicate both with the entire team but also with with individual student athletes. So easy enough to kind of ping them with a, you know, a direct message through Google Classroom.
That's a good idea, Doc, and we'll pass that on.
Anything else from the board?
Sure, if you don't mind. I just want to thank Mr. Bly and Mr. Quagliato. Just from the youth sports perspective, we reopened soccer and baseball in town. And I just know what a huge undertaking that has been to get releases done and to put together these plans. So I want to thank you both for the time and effort that you put into it and ensure our students are safe. But at the same time, I also want to just, you know, recognize that whether it's sports or it's music, it's really important to our students and that we should definitely look for, you know, the positive in this in that, you know, not every student loves school. And for some of our students, having a football practice, having a cheer practice, that's their full reason for why they go to school. So I want to keep that in mind when we're talking about mental health and going back to some normalcy, well-being in these safe protocols, that it's important for our students to to be able to get back to these types of activities. So I appreciate both of you putting forth that effort and helping our students get back to activities and getting back into a competitive mode to a certain degree and helping them get to the future. So thank you so much for taking the time to do all this. And to thank you to all of our coaches and directors, band directors. It's a huge undertaking and a lot of the protocols that came out from the NJ SIAA were very confusing. If anyone had seen that original document, it was pages and pages, Phases One through like 17. It was crazy. They definitely, you know, pared it down a little bit, but I appreciate Mr. Bly and Mr. Quagliato taking the time to put forth protocols that were a lot easier to understand. So thank you for that.
Great. Gary, did you have anything?
Yes, thank you. Just in in the event, and I'm going to hope we don't get here, but in the event that a competitive season, our performance season is not possible, is there planning underway right now for what this would look like for students in the absence of competition or performance, that there's some sort of continuing development?
Well, the NJI, NJ SIAA has said that should football break down, okay, or any sport break down, and they can still practice and keep the team together but cannot compete. In addition to that, we have two games this year that are a great distance apart. We play St. Peter's, which is one of the highest ranked teams in the country, and we play Northern Highlands. The state is looking at plans now to cancel those two games so that we only play in Essex County. So the kids don't have to travel after their area. But we're still a long way from opening day, and I think there's going to be a lot of changes. And we're still faced with a lot of uncertainty.
All right. Yeah, I think that was essentially my question. I was curious about, you know, if competition looks like it's going to be dicey. You know, if there is, you know, if they're talking about things like that, if they're talking about maybe thinking about how pairing teams so that you play the same team. so that you play the same team multiple times. I'm just, you know, I'm thinking of scholarship opportunities and, you know, what disappears if there's no season, which is, you know, really terrible for our kids.
Well, we're fortunate that we have four or five kids that have already accepted full scholarships. So they're kind of locked in. But right now, it's possible we play an eight-game schedule just within our league. And the two extra games, they won't be played. So we might play as little as eight games this year.
Wow. All right. Dr. Cascon, anything else?
Yes, I just want to continue on our conversation about reopening. But Mr. Bly, Mr. Quagliato, you're free to be on your way. So thank you. Mr. Quagliato, so thank you to Mr. Kelly. I know Mr. Kelly, the band director, has been very active in terms of working with you and developing the plans. Please extend our thanks to him as well.
I definitely will. He's been working real hard at getting this ready. So I will definitely pass that along. Thank you for having me too.
Thank you, gents.
Thank you.
So when you listen, I think, you know, Mr. Bly's and Mr. Quagliato's presentations were useful and informative for their specific purpose, which was to shed light on the protocol for band and for athletics. But I think when you start to hear the level of detail and the level intricacy that is involved even in this. And, you know, we talk about this, we're talking about outdoor activities. We're talking about a far smaller number of students than we are. And we talk about even a single school or certainly a school district. And so I think you start to understand the complexity of bringing, you know, large numbers of students back into interior facilities. Of course, as you know, we, you know, we did receive two weeks yesterday, the road back, we're calling it the brochure, the road back brochure from the State Department of Education. And, you know, today we've been spending, you know, every day really trying to unpack that plan, you know, teasing out all the relevant pieces of information, including but not limited to policy implications. And then, of course, some of the more important details as to social distancing and things of that nature. We assembled a district-level think tank, which was made up of internal stakeholders, including the Teachers Association leadership. And next week, we will convene subcommittees of principals and curricular supervisors. After that point, the planning process and involvement will start to fan out into school-based pandemic response groups as well as reopening teams and subcommittees committed to specific areas of the plan. But before I go, and by the way, the idea would be that we obviously have to submit our plan to the state by the end of July in, you know, in less than three weeks. And it would be in early August that we'd be able to put out our first concrete communications to our parent stakeholders as to what the specifics would be. And then over the course of August, we would be working around the clock to really make all that happen. So when we look at our, when we look at this planning initiative, and it's a complex initiative, really what we're trying to do is really marrying priorities as we understand them and wants with the logistic and financial realities amidst the shifting and uncertain and ambiguous medical and health guidelines, the greatest game of political football ever seen, and a situation that over the course of the school year can change on a dime, either for the better or for the worse, meaning that whatever model we're using would have to go back to exclusively virtual. Or if things go well, could switch to, you know, 100% onsite without any issues. And so I mentioned that because in the design of the plan, it's very important that it's a plan that can pivot and can transition rather quickly in either direction. So as an example, some of these ideas I've heard kind of bandied about there. There's like, well, only elementary kids will come back and they'll, we can use the high school, right? Or, you know, in the high school and middle school, students will stay home and the elementary schools will be dispersed throughout our other buildings. Even if we had the staffing to be able to do that, the problem is, is that if things get worse or things get better, now we have kids in a different facility and have to bring them back to their original facilities. So I think that's just one example of how some of the ideas that are being proposed are theoretical at best and really break down when you marry them up with the logistic and the financial realities. So what are some things that we know, that we, premises on which we feel we can, we can plan at this point in time? I think the first is, is that we know that there's a percentage of parents out there who are not going to send their kids to school. And that would prefer there to be an exclusively a virtual option. So we know that whatever plan we come up with has to afford for an exclusive virtual model. We, of course, understand that we need to apply lessons learned from the closures from this past school year and really enhance and make more consistent our offering, our product of virtual learning to make it more consistently engaging for students. We also understand that we have to bring a greater structure to the virtual school day for students. But that's a premise, a pretty clear premise on which we're basing our planning. We know that we have parents that want their children in school and really feel that students need onsite time. And we agree with that. We agree that trying to educate students exclusively in a virtual environment is very challenging for a variety of different reasons. We know that this time onsite would serve various purposes. One of them obviously is instruction and education. But we also know that our buildings can serve other purposes for students, namely the whole social emotional piece, socialization, counseling, college counseling, college advisement, extracurricular activities, and possibly athletics. So our buildings will continue to serve those purposes. We also have to understand, and as the manual or the brochure tells us, that we need to be putting a critical eye on student populations that are in greatest need of onsite time. What we saw and what we heard from our stakeholders in the special education population was that students in that group and parents in that group, you know, encountered significant challenges. And so we know that groups like ours self-contained special education populations, our E S L students, our students who are operating at tier three of our basic skills or intervention program and are already operating at a grade or two grades or maybe even three grades below level, represent a very high priority for us. We recognize that those students are in need of even perhaps greater time onsite. And the manual gives us the directive to really see to that accommodation in our plan. We know that parents, parents look to the schools for their student socialization, that social interaction, which we know has been so missing with the closures. And so we recognize that our schools, above and beyond the educational instructional piece, can be vital hubs where students can get that interaction with their classmates and their teachers, dare I say, even fun on some level, that we know our schools serve for them. But we also know that any model whereby students are not in school onsite on a daily basis, that that can raise childcare issues for parents. It was perhaps a little bit easier when a lot of parents were working home on a daily basis. But we know that in the fall, and certainly in the middle of the year, more and more parents are going to go back to work. And so we understand that hardship. And I can tell you that I've had extensive conversations and planning with the local YMCA that offers before and after care programs in two of our schools. And we are pursuing a partnership with the YMCA to be able to offer all-day care programs, potentially in every one of our elementary schools. And we're working through pricing on that, what the day would look like and some of the logistics. But we would be prepared in the very beginning of August to be able to present, to market that program to parents. And the district is prepared to partially subsidize that program for parents who would be in need of financial assistance for that program. We would also be open to offering that same program to staff members who might not be able, who might be managing their own children at home on hybrid schedules and recognize that they may have their own needs. So when you talk about these planning premises, then you come up against logistics, right? And I've seen a lot of theoretical models put out there. I've seen a lot of superintendents survey their community about models, which I can tell you from sitting in on superintendent roundtables, continue to be largely theoretical. They're soliciting feedback on models that when you marry them up with logistics, they simply don't work. And so I'd like to share a little bit of, share a little insight as to some of the logistics that we, that we're working with. I think first and foremost is our transportation. We're a district that buses a large number of our students. Not all districts are such. And we have social distancing guidelines that exist on buses. So even if we wanted to bring in a certain number of students on a given day, there's no guarantee that we would actually have the bus capacity to be able to do that. Every additional bus run costs approximately $53,000. And so to add an additional eight to 10 runs would be somewhere in the neighborhood of half a million dollars or more. And it could be more depending upon how many routes we need to add it. So all of our planning has been predicated on the idea that it's not feasible for us to add busing routes. We talk about classroom size. All of our classrooms, all of our schools have different-sized classrooms. Within schools, there are different-sized classrooms. They're not consistent from classroom to classroom. A 700-square-foot classroom with, at six feet apart, can accommodate seven desks, 800 square feet, eight desks, 900 square feet, nine desks, and so on and so forth. We also have some other issues with our facilities, which I think are worth bringing to light. Presently, we have classrooms that are being utilized for, in particular, our self-contained special education classrooms that are generally smaller than our regular classrooms because they generally house less students. But when you start to then talk about socially distancing students in that self-contained classroom, that classroom in which that self-contained program was housed is no longer feasible to offer that program, which means that that classroom needs to be relocated into another, a larger-sized classroom, thus displacing a class that would have been there. We talk about our nurses' offices. The protocol for isolation of students is very specific. It needs to be a separate space. It needs to be partitioned off. It needs to have a window whereby the nurse can monitor. And it obviously needs to have proper heating, ventilation, and/or air conditioning. Most of our nurses' office presently do not have those accommodations, which means in most of our buildings, we need to identify another location within the building that can kind of serve as the sickbay, thus displacing another class. So I think it's, and these are just some of the weeds that we're down into. But when you start talking about bringing back large number of students at one time, there are some logistic issues in which we find ourselves challenged. A final piece, and it's certainly not least at all, is the fact that we know that, you know, within our professional-certificated staff, we will have staff members who have pre-existing conditions, autoimmune diseases, diabetes, heart disease, cancer survivors, pregnancies, that would potentially obtain doctors' orders, which would preclude, prohibit them from servicing students onsite face-to-face. In cooperation with the local Teachers Association, we have put out a survey and we are presently collecting that data. We had 600 responses as of today and put out a call to teachers today for them to check their email and to submit that survey. But that data will be very helpful in terms of the extent to which, you know, we could, we could offer one of these hybrid models onsite. We talk about, you know, if those teachers go on leave. If it were 10% of our teachers, it would be about 80 teachers. The national average in surveys is about 20%. If it were 20%, we'd be looking at about 160 teachers. We certainly can't afford to pay replacements. And so I think that one of the planning premises we're basing it on is the fact that we keep as many of our teachers employed to deliver the model and service the model as we possibly can. One final point is that, you know, there's this shifting guideline about social distancing. Of course, the manual, the brochure around which we're doing our planning says six feet. That's what we have. And of course, we know contemporaneously with the release of that brochure, we have the Association, the American Pediatric Association, which has kind of thrown this number of three feet out. Yet that is not present within the brochure around which we're doing our planning. Further, we understand that perhaps there might be some further modifications to C D C guidelines, though the last I heard, that was not the case. But let's envision, let's envision a classroom, provided that we have a teacher that's medically able to deliver instruction to a classroom. Let's envision a classroom, an elementary classroom with seven-year-olds in it, 23 students in the class, all of them in masks, three feet apart, which we're to assume is actually safe for them, in masks for the entire day, in a second-floor classroom without air conditioning. They can't really talk to each other. They can't interact. They can't collaborate. And the teacher is in the front of the room with a mask and maybe a face shield delivering instruction. I think we really need to think about what an experience like that for kids. And that's just the beginning of it. You know, from taking temperatures to following arrows on a hallway. I really believe we need to think about, yes, in our efforts to get students back, not having it be an experience that, not to be melodramatic about it, traumatizes them for a prolonged period of time about school. And so I think it's important for us to take that into consideration. So, you know, that is, that is kind of where we are presently. I can tell you that the model we're looking at right now does provide weekly opportunities for all students to be in school. And it does provide additional time onsite for students that are at the greatest risk. We are in the weeds of, you know, figuring out busing cohorts and classroom capacities and things of that nature. But that is essentially where we are right now in the planning. And obviously, we will, we will provide further updates as we move forward. So that is one final piece, unrelated to reopening, but I would remiss if I did not touch upon this. It's just to give the community an update on our work with diversity and equity. So next week, on the 15th of July, the board will convene for a public policy meeting. And we are in the process of finalizing a draft of a board bylaw, a board equity bylaw. I will be posting that draft tomorrow on the district website. It'll also be linked through social media, so our community can have an opportunity to review the draft of that bylaw. And we encourage and strongly invite our community members to join us on the 15th, to review the bylaw rather, and to join us on the 15th and provide us with feedback on that. I can speak for the board that community feedback, inclusivity on the development of that bylaw is extremely important to the board, extremely important to the administration. And so that is a step that the board is taking to kind of lay down that bylaw. I would at this time like to turn it over to Mrs. DeMendez. She can provide an update on some of the ongoing work that's happening this summer with regard to our Diversity, Equity, and Access Committee. And I thought the community would be interested in hearing some of the progress we're making with some of our initiatives. Mrs. DeMendez?
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Cascon. So our Diversity, Equity, and Access Committee has been meeting to discuss professional development for our staff, to discuss how we're preparing for integrating the topics that we have received in terms of feedback into our curriculum, et cetera. As of late, what we are planning is a racial bias survey that's being disseminated to our staff. As our country continues to be confronted, right, with the complexities of racist policies and its outcomes, we're really taking a look at what are these key topics that need to be addressed with our staff. Therefore, in this survey, we are asking the staff to identify their interest in very specific areas. One of them is understanding American history with a focus on the creation and myths of United States history compared to the events which did occur and to make educators aware of systemic racism. Another area of focus is understanding implicit bias, which is a focus on the attitudes or stereotypes that affect our understanding, our actions, and decisions in an unconscious manner. The third would be understanding microaggressions, subtle racist, sometimes intentional behaviors, included but not limited to name-calling. And then the fourth is introduction to talking about race for those who seek a basic starting point and have not yet read books or attended training on these topics. The types of professional development that are going to be offered and have already started tonight is, started the first day for a book club on the book stamped. And there are others that are taking place across the district. They are listed on our website, any summer activities on our website under the Diversity Committee page. But types of professional development that we're preparing for include but are not limited to books, book clubs, the traditional workshop models, whether they're in-person or virtual. We're looking at an ed camp in the fall, which will be open not just to staff but to community members to attend, professional learning communities, action research, lecture series, and the unconference. So the unconferences where participants can determine discussion topics and break into small sessions based on their preferences. So this is where we are today. That survey will go out to staff shortly and then we'll begin, or we are in process for planning for the professional development. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. DeMendez. And just to, we do plan at some point in time this summer to bring our full committee back together and to engage in... and to engage in really developing kind of a micro strategic plan as it relates to these topics. And just as a follow-up, I had a very gratifying Google Meet this evening with a group of students from the high school who have formed a group called Orange Outcry. And they presented me with a ten-page PowerPoint, which was amazingly done. And so I've enlisted their assistance in recruiting delegates from other like organizations within the high school to form a superintendent's Equity Student Advisory Committee, which I would envision being, being a part of the work that we do later in the summer. So good short-term things happening, more long-term strategic planning in the works. And we're very excited about, about the things that are going to become, coming for our district. And I think that the board's equity bylaw, which they may touch upon later tonight, will be a great driver, you know, a high-level driver of our efforts. So, Mrs. DeMendez, thank you. Mr. President, that is my report for this evening.
All right, great. Any board questions on anything from the superintendent's report that wasn't covered already in the athletic part? No? All right. Public questions from the public on agenda items, agenda items only is the next thing on the agenda. If you have a question or a comment on anything that is on tonight's agenda, you'll have the instructions on your screen, and Laura will walk you through the process of raising your hand. When you come in, please do state your name and address for the record, and please do respect, please do be respectful of the three-minute time limit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, as Mr. Appel said, you can follow the on-screen instructions. If you're one of our call-in patrons, you can use star nine, not pound nine, but star nine. That'll also put you in the queue. And you can raise your hand with the raise your hand button at the bottom of the screen at any time. You don't have to wait for the person to stop speaking. So first, we have John Schwartz. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, this is actually John's wife, Julie Bookbinder, thirty-seven. Thanks, thirty-seven, Collumworth Circle. As the parent of two elementary-age children, I am pleading with the board to have a concrete plan for instruction by classroom teachers for any virtual component of the 2020-21 school year. The school year is set to begin in just two short months, but that is still two more months than there was to plan for the first round of distance learning, and I hope that the time will be used wisely. For example, if students are physically in school on alternating days or weeks, do classrooms have the technology and do schools have the bandwidth to livestream the school day to students who are not in school that day or week? Or can the school day be recorded for students who are in childcare centers when they are not in school? If the schools have to be closed completely, what will the requirements be for teachers to provide remote instruction, whether live or prerecorded? While my family greatly appreciates all the work that went into making the distance learning experience possible this spring, the worksheets and videos on YouTube or Brain Pop without context or explanation of the overall concepts, unfortunately, is not sufficient to meet the educational standards that we all expect in West Orange. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other people in the audience? The raise-your-hand sign is on the bottom of your screen. It's just a hand there, or star nine if you are calling in. And we have no other, oh, right at the last minute there. Melinda, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello?
Hi, okay, there you go. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Melinda Huerta at Seventeen Park Drive South. My question is in regards to this option to do the virtual learning. My child was having a lot of difficulty, and now we spoke about this, and I am not comfortable sending them back to school. Would there be an option to homeschool using certain curriculum from the school? Like, what assistance would we be, would be at our disposal in that scenario?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And do we have anyone else at this time?
All right. See you none.
Yep. No, that's it. That was all.
Okay, great. Seeing none. Dr. Cascone, anything on the homeschooling and such?
Sure, sure. And I'd like to just thank Mr. Bookbinder, Ms. Huerta, you know, for speaking tonight. Appreciate that. Yes, one hundred percent agreed on the virtual piece. I think that's a, I think that's a consensus that is shared both, you know, from our external stakeholders and internally. You know, and I appreciate the recognition of the effort that went into kind of putting our best foot forward, you know, with a short turnaround and certainly the additional time that we have and will be, will be spent. You know, once we get past this in the next week, you know, kind of the broad planning, we'll be focused very much on that piece. And so one of the things that we've been kind of tossing about is the idea of, of having the opening weeks of school really being opportunities for, you know, for staff and for students and parents alike to be getting acclimated, to be getting trained in order that we have a kind of more of a soft rollout as opposed to just this kind of abrupt starting, you know, from day one. I can tell you that as far as the recording feature, I think when you talk about screencastifies or things of that nature, recording for students who weren't even necessarily to see it in real time is a definite possibility. I think that one of the, one of the subcommittees that we work on this summer will be dedicated specifically to the topic of schedule. Like, what does the virtual schedule, virtual school day schedule look like? The live streaming from the classroom, I have to tell you, is a little bit tricky. And the technological capacity is actually the easier of the hurdles to overcome. There are privacy issues and concerns which are raised and have been raised by various different groups and stakeholders as it relates to live streaming students in the classroom. And they relate to, you know, amongst other things, the fact of, you know, special needs students are in the classroom, you know, who might have one-to-one, one-to-one paras. And so it's giving people outside of that classroom a window into students who have additional supports, and it really becomes a confidentiality issue. And I think that what I've heard is, talking to legal counsel, that that could be a roadblock for that. But that aside, I think we recognize that the virtual experience, both for students who are going to be coming in for hybrid or students who choose to be only virtual, is going to be, need to be more robust, more engaging, and a greater degree of consistency across grade levels across classrooms. So it is very much a focus of our efforts this summer. And Mrs. DeMendez will be taking the lead on, on that effort as she did with the initial effort. As far as the homeschool piece goes, certainly under board policy, any parent can, can withdraw their child and homeschool them. What I would, and yes, the school district can and should, under board policy, provide the parent with curricular resources and supports. Of course, these policies were written before the technological age, really, where a lot of resources became digital. What I, what I would suggest on that one, I say, I think the decision to homeschool a child is one that, that you want to have inclusively. And I think, and I think the building principal is a good person to start with in order to ensure that, you know, that that represents the best option, you know, versus continuing to kind of have your child kind of operate within the virtual platform for us. So it's something you can do. Certainly, I'm happy to speak with you more about it offline, or I would encourage you to reach out to the building principal and just have kind of an open, you know, kind of inclusive dialogue about that and work through that decision very carefully. But certainly, the school district is obliged under policy to provide you with curricular supports to assist you with, with that endeavor, should you choose to, to take that on.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on. Personnel, items one through four. May I have a motion? Wait, seven seconds.
Seconded.
All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none. Mr. Calabano.
This is Merklinger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein. Yes. Mrs. Tony Cliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right, next, Curriculum and Instruction, item one. May I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Calabano.
This is Merklinger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein. Yes. Mrs. Tony Cliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. Business Office, items one through seven. May I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Second. But do get out.
I'm good. I got it.
You got it, okay.
It doesn't really make it to the one.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none. Mr. Calabano.
This is Merklinger.
Yeah.
Mr. Rothstein. Yes. Mrs. Tony Cliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right, public comment now on any topic at all. Again, you'll have three minutes. Again, please let us know your name and address when you come in. And again, please be respectful of the time limit, and you can click the button and raise your hand.
Thank you very much. Again, just the bottom of your screen. If by chance you're having problems, you could just move your mouse. If your screen disappears, I had a question about that another time. Just move your mouse to raise your hand button will pop up at the bottom. Brent, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi, this is Brent Scott, Seven-Five Nestro Road. I have two quick things. I sent an email to Ms. DeMendez earlier this week, and it bounced back. I then sent the email to Contact Us, which is listed on the board's website, and that also bounced back. So something's clearly wrong with the board's email that you may want to check into. My question is regarding the honors program for sixth grade. There, we are, we're receiving conflicting information regarding the qualifications for honors. And I'm just hoping that someone here can give us some clarification on what the qualifications are, what the requirements are, because we have conflicting information in the mail as well as based on, which is different from what Ms. DeMendez said at a presentation in April. And so if someone could please just clarify, what are the requirements for sixth-grade honors? Does a student, if he or she is already in the honors program and has been for the last two years, do they have to take a placement exam? Do you have to take a placement exam regardless? Just what is the requirement and qualifications, please? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rothstein. Should we wait till, got it?
Okay. And thank you. Jackie, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone.
Thanks.
This is Jackie Bazan for Rainbow Terrace, West Orange. I addressed the board at the previous meeting regarding the non-renewal of School Guidance Counselor Michael Dubose. The board heard from a number of residents regarding concerns over this issue and the impact on the social emotional, the social emotional impact on students at the high school. The board has still not addressed this. She didn't have it on the agenda today, and it's still an issue of concern, particularly as this continues to unfold, as we look at what the fall is going to look like. There are still major concerns of having a, you know, someone who is capable of doing that, and quite honestly, be as outstanding in their job, which I don't really believe is totally the case with the current staff. But also for the majority of the students who are African-American, who have someone that they can identify with, this is critical for our students to be able to have that. And you guys, you all know this. I don't understand why this is such an issue. So that's a big thing. The other thing is, myself and other residents made a request to the superintendent and the board for transparency regarding the percentage of educators throughout the district who are African-American, and then specifically also looking at the thirty members who were not renewed and the demographic makeup of that group as well. That information still has not been provided either to the residents or to other outside entities that requested the information. So I'd certainly like to know a timeline of when that will happen. It's been at least three weeks, between three and four weeks since those requests were made. And I get that everybody's got a lot on their plate, but this issue is pressing, and so it's on our plate as well. So I continue to respectfully ask the board to reinstate Michael Dubose. I continue to respectfully ask for the information that we have requested when, as we're looking at how we're truly trying to diversify our district. Because quite honestly, right now, I'm not seeing it. And as a resident, and with all the money I pay you guys in taxes, I'm not happy about it. So I want the information. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other residents who would like to speak? Again, it's the raise-your-hand button, and if you are one of our callers, it's star nine. Okay, and we have Tez, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be short. It's more of a thank you than a question. It looks like our high school students were able to get a graduation today. And I know that in some of the community groups, parents were showing a lot of appreciation and excitement for this. I know that at one point, this seemed like it may not happen. So I just want to thank everyone who was involved with this to give our students this memorable experience. And thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Okay. And again, do we have anyone else? And it looks like that is it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll close that portion out. Tez, thank you. And yeah, definitely a huge thank you to everyone at the high school, everyone on the Buildings and Grounds crew who helped make this possible, everyone on the administrative side who planned everything, our students, our teachers, our parents, you know, and of course, our students are fantastic, amazing class of 2020, which has persevered through so much and who we are uniformly so incredibly proud of. Thank you. You know, Ms. Bazan, you know, obviously, this is, it's a hard situation, and obviously, we can't really discuss personnel directly. You know, it's very difficult. And I think as Dr. Cascone has pointed out in numerous previous meetings, and not only on this specific topic, financially, we, we do not know what is coming down the road. We know that there are, you know, the road ahead from the pamphlet, whatever we want to call it, costs are phenomenal. We don't know what those all are yet. We know that we've lost some state aid, we assume, because we can only assume that there will be further financial pain coming in the way of both shortfalls in property tax and other tax collection, not money that, that we should be collecting, not reaching us, but then also in the, in the state aid that we do receive initially sixteen-point-something million, then one-point-five million already announced back in May was going to be cut. I think there's a, there's a wide assumption that a lot more of that, there's a very good chance that more of that is going to be disappearing between now and September thirtieth, when the state fiscal year actually ends. You know, again, without talking about personnel in general, I would never want to be in a position where the, where the board was saying to people, we can, we have money for this position, we have money for this position, we have money for that position, and then find out that actually, we don't have money for not just those positions, but for another, you know, God forbid, twenty, thirty, you know. We remember 2010, when, you know, simultaneously, a two percent cap came into being, and the, back then, when the budget was on the ballot, and that budget failed, then that board had to cut a large sum of money. And I think it ended up being close to a hundred jobs in the space of a couple of weeks' time, which was just devastating. So, you know, we, we don't want to create false hope while simultaneously, you know, understanding, you know, the, an empathy, empath, empath, sympathizing very sincerely with both the specific case and the more obvious general situation that, you know, that we need a more diverse staff, and we're trying to retain and recruit a more diverse staff. And these sorts of, you know, financial-based layoffs are never easy in those cases. you know, financial-based layoffs are never easy in those cases. Dr. Cascone, I think you had one other on there?
Like, I just wanted to.
On honors.
Yeah, I wanted to first address Mr. Scott's question. I just saw an email come into my inbox. I believe Ms. DeMendez has reached out to Mr. Scott by email to clarify that. You know, so he will have the information that he needs in short order. Just, just to kind of speak to Mrs. Bazan's points, I received two written requests for information of this nature. One was from Mr. Tom Purrier of the NAACP, and the other was from Mr. Jonathan Redwine. I did, subsequent to the correspondence I received from Mr. Redwine, had a follow-up conversation with him, which was cordial and constructive. And I did ask for Mr. Redwine's and perhaps his colleagues' patience as we were transitioning a new director of human resources and was going to charge our director, director of human resources with collecting that data. While some of the data requested in the email was fairly straightforward and relatively easy to cull, there was other data that was going to require, that was not readily available and would need to be data mined. But I, as I had promised to Mr. Redwine and colleagues, that information will be provided ASAP within the next week or so. I would like to correct the record and have an email as documentation that I did, in fact, email Mr. Tom Purrier back on June 29th, and provided him with the information that he asked, which was specific to the demographic breakdown of the non, of the RIFs from this particular year. I did not receive a response to that email, but I did indeed send it to him on June 29th and look forward to his response. But we will get that. It's, it's much easier to have the request in writing, as we know exactly the data that's being requested. That request is, is on file, and it will be processed. And I can tell you that moving forward, and as is reflected in the draft bylaw, which the board is working on now, it, it speaks very specifically to transparency about hiring as well as other things. So the days of transparency are here. We look forward to, to, to a time when, when, when community members don't need to reach out proactively and individually to do so, but that the community at large receives this kind of information on a daily, on a, on a monthly basis through our board meetings, through regular updates. Part of our accountability moving forward is going to be setting clear goals and benchmarks and reporting out to the community on a regular basis on how we're doing that. My performance, perhaps my perpetuation as the superintendent of schools of this district, will be predicated on my ability as a leader of the school district to do this moving forward. And while what has occurred this year relative to the financial situation is regrettable, I'm hopeful that the assessment of my commitment to equity and diversity in the school district, not only through my service this past year, but also in what I do moving forward, will, will be the ultimate judge of my commitment and my effectiveness in this regard. Mr. President?
Thank you. And I think a lot of that applies for us on the board as well. Board member reports, Mr. Rothstein, do anything interesting lately?
No, not at all. But I'll tell you, who did do something interesting is the class of 2020. And I know that's on a lot of our minds, the graduation ceremonies having occurred today at the high school. So very briefly, I just wanted to say congratulations to the students on, on your graduation, and you have my best wishes, and I think from all of us, your best wishes for, for your future success. To the parents also, something that I wasn't prepared for, this was my first time attending high school graduation, possibly since my own high school graduation. The looks on the faces of the parents, the pride, several parents doing little dances on their way off of the field, the, the excitement was just palpable and so much fun to see, and really brought home to me how much this ceremony was about the parents and their accomplishment, their accomplishments as well. So congratulations to you, and I hope you really enjoyed the ceremonies today. And then finally, a thought that occurred to me as I was watching the graduation ceremonies is that the students didn't just graduate from West Orange High School today. Many, most, almost all of them graduated from the West Orange School District. So many students came up through all of our schools, elementary school, middle schools here in the district. And it's really, the graduation of our high school students is cause for celebration from all of our schools and all of our faculty and staff. So just a lot of good feelings and a lot of appreciation for what was accomplished, what today represented an accomplishment. Thank you.
Well said. Ms. Trig Scales?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Alper. I have to echo what Mr. Rothstein said, and which I'm sure all of us would, will say today. It was, it was a wonderful, wonderful send-off for our students. I want to thank Mr. Moore and his leadership team and his staff. You know, they had the, the little three-seat clusters there for two guests and the graduate. They had a chance to come up, get two pictures taken, they were announced. I don't think it could be any better for what had to be done in such short order and with such stringent guidelines as far as the pandemic. So congratulations to our graduates and to their families. I, I just want to say this, because I am, I am distressed that we had so many folks sign petitions about the guidance counselor. And so it is disturbing. I, I think if we could all go back in time and think things through differently, there may have been a different outcome. However, where we are at this point in time is a very anxious time for everyone. It's an anxious time for parents. It's an anxious time for us. The emotional well-being of our students and staff is primary right now. That, that's really what we have to focus on. And we are embarking on a school opening, school opening like no other. It's coming into focus now, but there's still so many unknowns that could very quickly blur our vision. And Dr. Cascone and his leadership team, you heard what is planned, and that's outstanding, but it could change on a dime. And so what we need to do is to look at where we are at this point in time. We know that with personal protective equipment or our new PPE that everybody talks about, I heard one estimate that per student, it could cost $498 for a three-week supply. We don't know how much, we don't know how many, we don't know for how long. That's one unknown. The other one is social distancing materials. What does that even mean? What does that look like? The costs are going up day by day. Difficult to even attain some of the materials. We don't know what that looks like. Cleaning supplies. And, and that whole act of cleaning, I mentioned to Dr. Cascone and Mr. Alper, will we even have enough custodian, custodial staff to clean our buildings, to clean our classrooms, to clean the furniture as often as it needs to be cleaned by the guidelines? So we don't know about that. And then, as Mr. Alper said, the possibility of losing additional state aid. We don't have funds sitting anywhere right now that we can expend without having some answers about all that lies in front of us. And so as much as we'd like to be able to do some things differently, we just can't at this point in time. It would be financially very much not prudent for us to do that, because we just don't know what's coming down the road. And so I, I just want folks to know, we appreciate your interest, we appreciate your concern. That has not gone unnoticed. We, we heard you at the last board meeting. We see what's being posted on a regular basis. We feel it. We understand it. But there isn't anything that we can do about it at this point in time. And I, I just wanted to say that as an individual board member, as the only black board member, as the only black elected official in West Orange, it weighs very, very heavily on me. And I just wanted to, to say that this evening to those folks who have gone out of their way to let us know how they feel. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Merklinger?
So I just want to echo, you know, my peers. Congratulations to the class of 2020. All the pictures that I've seen on social media, just the smiles, the excitement, you know, you've earned it, and we wish you the best of luck on your future endeavors. In terms of what's going on, we saw a lot of actual activities. I'm excited, of course, for sports to restart next week. So not only do we have football starting, we have volleyball, the band is starting, soccer's starting, cheerleading is going to be, going to camp at the end of this month. But we also have our baseball team. And for those who are not familiar, the Last Dance Tournament was created to give the seniors who didn't have their final season another opportunity to play for their high school one last time. So West Orange is the number-two seed. We're hosting next week, so I encourage the community to come out, obviously with masks and social distancing, but definitely come out and support the team. I think it's going to be a really great opportunity just to get everyone back to some sort of normalcy. And with that, thank you, and see you guys next time.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Tony Cliff?
Thank you, President Alper. You know, first, I'd like to congratulate the class of 2020. It was a great day today for graduation, and we look forward to hearing about all of the wonderful endeavors that you'll be doing in the next phase of your life. Good luck to you all. And I also wanted to just quickly point out that Dr. Cascone and Ms. DeMendez have put on some links in the Zoom webinar chat to the Google Sites for Diversity and Equity on our webpage. There is also the honors criteria, for those who are interested, that Ms. DeMendez put up. So I just wanted to point that out. If you want to get the information tonight, it's right there. I think, you know, I'd also like to just say we're, we're doing quite a bit right now, you know, in terms of our board work. And we, I want to specifically address also and add on to what Ms. Trig Scales said about how difficult this is. We hear you. We understand the need for a safe, social, and emotional space for our students, particularly our Black students, and we understand that. And I think she said it most elegantly in terms of, you know, what our constraints are right now, and what, and how difficult this is for us to make decisions in this environment where there is so much uncertainty and nothing is clear. And even when we think things are clear, you know, we always have to be able to be ready to pivot. So, you know, our commitment is really to working towards what we can do on our policies and our bylaws in terms of diversity and equity. As you heard tonight, there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes. Ms. DeMendez is working with the Diversity and Equity Committee, and there's a lot of really great things percolating right now that we anticipate hearing more about. So I did just want to address that as well, because it is not an easy, you know, decision. And I think, you know, we're, we're trying to ensure that we are doing the best for all of our students in the district with what, with the information that we have right now and moving us forward and looking at a September opening. So thank you all for being here tonight, and we appreciate your efforts to communicate with us and to talk to us about your concerns. So we, we do hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. And well said. And, you know, that's definitely worth highlighting, that, you know, something that we can do that costs nothing is to make clear statements of our principles and our beliefs. And, you know, that's exactly what we're working on right now. You know, I think this board has done a, you know, a solid amount of work in the diversity and equity space, and we're putting our no money where our mouth is and doing exactly that in our next meeting, which we are encouraging the public to attend virtually as we work on this draft of this new policy. And that is, again, 7:30 PM on the 15th, right here on the internet. With that, I, again, will congratulate the class of 2020 and thank everyone who made that a reality today. That was a fantastic experience. See you soon. Have a good night, everyone. We are adjourned.
Hey, thank you. This is just announcement that when I end the meeting, it will end for both those on and off camera, and no other business will be conducted once the meeting ends. Thank you all, and have a great night.